All right, we'll get this meeting of the City of International Falls Regular City Council Meeting to order. It is 5:30. If you could all join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
Pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Please note that Counselor Wegner is out of town. He is on vacation. He let us know that in advance, that he wouldn't be here this evening. Everybody else is present. Next item on the agenda would be to approve the agenda. We did get a request to have item number three removed off the agenda for the evening, so the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that deletion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four zero. Next, we have the minutes from the July 1st Regular City Council Meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four zero. Go to the minutes of our Committee of the Whole on July 8th. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden.
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four zero. That brings us to the resolution for adopting the payments and claims. We have International Falls transfers of $66,666.66. That is coming evenly from the 601 Water Fund in the amount of $33,333.33, and the same amount out of the 603 Sewer. Going to the 403 Reserve for Capital Outlay is $20,567.25. That's coming from the 601 Water in the amount of $14,693, and the 603 Sewer in the amount of $5,874.25, for a total transfers of $87,233.91. Accounts payable, International Falls has payable claims of $670,843.46. International Falls Library Board claims of $5,953.90. Airport claims of $5,760.67. And airport major claims, and it's just a reissue of avoided check, $725.34. For a total accounts payable and claims of $683,283.37, Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution and pay the bills.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
Second.
Second by Counselor Holden. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
All vote yes, motion carries, four zero. Next, we'll go to audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something forward that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, we will give you an opportunity again later in the meeting. We'll go down to the opening bids for quotes, the Household Garbage Service quotes. All right. Betty, how are we handling that?
Thank you, Mayor. As per the new garbage ordinance, we put out quotes to, accept quotes, excuse me, for garbage service for those that are cited, and we need to enforce garbage service on those properties after a process of time and notices and things. And we received one back, and therefore today we will open that publicly and state what that fee will be for us to do that. And that vendor will then, if we ever have to enforce this on a property, they would bill the City of International Falls. We would then in turn add that to their billing, a monthly billing, and if not paid, it would be something that would be able to be assessed at the end of the year to their property taxes.
Excellent. Let's open up that quote.
So, the quote is from Friends Garbage. And the quote is for one year as stated, and for a 48-gallon weekly service, tax included is $26.34 for a weekly service. Friends Garbage Service, 3131 Highway 53. And they currently hold a city license number 136 to do garbage collection within our city.
Okay, so then do we take action on that this evening?
Yes.
Okay. So the Chair would entertain a motion to accept the bid that came in from Friends Garbage?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion?
That's, that's weekly ser, a monthly.
I was just gonna ask that same question. Is that monthly or weekly?
Well, it's monthly to pick it up. Weekly, I'm assuming, because that's what my bill is.
That is correct, yes. Thank you for that.
Just to make sure people know.
Weekly service billed monthly.
Monthly, correct.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four zero. Next, we'll go down to the second and final reading of the updated International Falls Charter as presented by the Charter Commission. As you remember, we had to have a full City Council to do the original reading on this. Because we have had a full Council approve the first reading, the second reading is just confirming, we will not need to have a full Council for the second reading. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the second and final reading of the International Falls Charter.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion?
Just once again, I'd like to thank everybody on the Charter Commission, and for all the time and effort they put in. What's funny, we started, when we started, one of the things they said, "This isn't about wordsmithing." Well, I don't know what's beyond wordsmithing, but we might have did that, but nothing really changed. It's just simpler and more easy to follow. And Lisa, and Betty, and the city staff were immensely helpful, and the people that were on it did a great job and very enthusiastic, and they'll be glad to hear that it's crossed the finish line.
Excellent. And so if this gets approved, it has to be printed, and then 90 days after printing, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. Once publication is taking place, what we will do, due to this complexity and size, we will publish a summary, and notice that it's available for full review at City Hall and at the Public Library, and then it has to be 90 days, and then it's effective. The residents have 60 days in order to bring in, if they choose to, a petition to have it on as a referendum item. So there is, you know, a further process that needs to be done, but yes, that is going forward what will take place.
Excellent. Please.
I want to thank Pete for being on that, too. Pete, you did a good job on that. You're the one that was cheering it up, and thank you.
Thank you, yeah, well, I had lots of help. As you all know, it takes a village with Pete sometimes, so, good. And this will be, and we still will be meeting once, twice a year, and if there's ever any questions or thoughts that people think we might need not, whether it's from the Council or anybody else, we will be meeting a couple times a year.
Excellent. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four zero. Next, we go down to the approval of the annual audit as prepared by Schlender and Wenner. Ryan, I don't believe he is online. We had this presented to us last week. There is, we're still waiting on some information from the airport to put together a final copy, so the city administrator and myself just suggested that we hold off on approving this until after we get the whole thing finalized and we just put in a request for extension. Is that correct, Betty?
Yes, and, and, thank you, Mayor. In speaking with Ryan at Schlender-Wenner, he doesn't anticipate any negative impact to the city's audit, the city portion of the audit, once the airport portion is complete. And he, he said it's up to the Council if you wish to do it contingent upon that final approval, or just waiting until that is done. So he was okay either way, but, you know, it is, could change slightly, may not change at all. You know, we would have to come back if it does change and, you know, final it. So my suggestion would be to hold it until it is complete in order to have all of that information as a completed document.
Does anybody feel compelled to approve it today? If not, we can just table this to our next Council meeting.
I'm moved to table it.
Okay, we have a motion to table till our next Council meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four zero. So we'll have that on our next Council meeting, and we'll put in a request for extension. All right, next, consider the closure of Fourth Avenue from Third Street to Second Street for July 27th, 2024. On the Rocks is gonna have a street dance. Terry Wood, please come up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. It's pretty self-explanatory. We're planning a street dance for the, it's a block, summer block party for July 27th on the avenue. Basically blocking the street off from the alley, kinda like, well, exactly like how we do it for Icebox Days, from Third Street to the alley on Fourth Avenue. My insurance is with Tammy Doherty, and she gave me the thumbs up today that our coverage has been endorsed, and obviously we follow all the, all the rules and regs per licensing. But we are, we're having a live band, and it's deep tracks with Eric Kulig, and they will actually be on the avenue. And Fun Food Factory gave me a go-ahead today that they're gonna be present, so we'll have some, some food available also. And it's from 8:00 until midnight, and hopefully we can get everybody out of there by 1:00.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Any, any concerns that the Council might have?
We haven't had any problems in the past with anything?
No.
Good.
Nope, this is my fourth year, and so far, so good. Knocked it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Chair, please, Chief, do you have any concerns?
No concerns.
All right. All right. Chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion?
I'll try and stay awake till 8:00.
Right. So hopefully everybody can show up and enjoy some live music, so.
And we're becoming quite the music hub here in International Falls.
Right?
Yes, I like it, yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I will call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next, we have the International Falls Coochin County Airport Commission Semi-Annual Update. Thor and crew, come on up.
Good evening.
Yes. Here, you know, we had some dialogue with Betty regarding what materials wanted to be shared tonight. We've brought some with us, and a lot of it has been shared over the, you know, over the past six months, years with Walt and Tim representing the airport and the city side. Let me, let me share a couple of quick things, just to kind of review for the, for the folks of the city and to understand the importance of the airport. Just, you know, starting here quickly. Minnesota has 133 publicly funded airports, and of those 133 public airports, only nine have scheduled carrier service. Of those nine were the smallest, which were very, very fortunate. Of the 133 airports, five have a U.S. Customs Immigration. The airport obviously supports Medac for the hospital, supports air freight daily and major airlines, has a four-day-a-week contract, Tuesday through Friday, that provides UPS freight for the area. Airport directly employs 200 employees. MINDOT study, which we shared at our joint meeting six or now seven months ago, whatever it was, just reminding the group, there was a 2019 study, and in 2019 dollars, the airport contributes $28 million in positive economic impact to the community and the area. So obviously, it's, it's, you're getting bang for the buck. Couple of, couple of quick things before we get into the questions and answer, I just wanted to share what else we were chatting earlier tonight, Sean and Kyra and I, is that there's also some good news on the funding, which we'll ask Sean a little bit here to share, where that has, I believe it's gone to now 1.25 percent. So that's really, at this point, please ask questions, we're here to help you.
Perfect. Well, first, let me say thank you for coming today. One of the things, about two years ago, one of the things that Counselor Buller had brought up is we give a lot of different entities funds, and we don't really necessarily know all the time where, where they go. And then as we've been having deeper conversations about the joint powers agreement that we have, we find out in there that we're supposed to have an annual, a semi-annual report, so we just want to do what's, what's inside there. And it's fantastic to have you guys come in and just give us a report of what's going on at the airport. And I think we've all been pretty, pretty clear that we understand how important the airport is, and servicing both Coochin County, International Falls, and just want to say thank you for, for coming. I'll open it up for questions unless you guys have anything, anything else to present.
Go ahead, Walt.
Go ahead, Walt.
I don't have a question. I'm just saying, go ahead, Sean.
Sure. I guess the only thing I could have to add is that airport funding primarily comes from the FAA. It is called the Airport Improvement Program, expended by Congress, and just recently, they passed a new AIP program, as Thor alluded to, that will actually fund the airport with FAA dollars to a greater degree, both in dollar amount, which is $1.3 million per year, because the airport receives 10,000 employments, which is somebody getting on an aircraft. So with that $1.3 million, it's able to be used on FAA eligible projects, such as safety and security-type projects at the airport. In addition to that new legislation that passed, that new funding, there is also an increase in funding amount. International Falls would typically receive 95 percent funding from FAA. They've increased that to 97.5 percent for the next year as part of that legislation. So any FAA projects that are completed at the airport then would receive that, that funding amount. The airport also receives funding support from MINDOT Aeronautics at the rate of 70 percent of eligible projects. The airport actually just received some maintenance equipment this year, a lawnmower that was funded by state funding. So that the MINDOT Aeronautics, they help out where the FAA cannot support due to FAA rules that are tested by. The airport has a requirement to keep a 20-year CIP on, kind of on, on the plan, so the airport has that. We meet with the FAA monthly to help kind of go through the projects that both are ongoing and also the ones in the future. So right now, there's a grant application for some FAA projects that include mostly safety equipment, snow removal equipment, both for aircraft, removing the ice off aircraft, as well as runway deicing equipment. That's really about it. We meet monthly with FAA, go through the projects, and keep them up to speed as they're one of your larger funding sources. So happy to answer any questions that anybody may have on the airport.
I think I just, from a couple meetings, I understand, the 1.3 million here, though, that doesn't have any share to it, right?
It does. So that would be the federal amount, so that would be the 97.5 percent. So the project cost would be like 1.4.
Yeah, I got it, all right.
Yep. Okay.
Perfect. How, just real quick question on how, how does the, some of the charters that come in? I know we've had, we have another one coming up pretty quick. How do those work? How does that work with the airport? Like, as for flying in, because they aren't a daily fly-in, you know, how do we set up things like that? There's people that greatly appreciate having that opportunity here. Is there other opportunities for things like that?
You know, it's a great question. Literally, you know, what happens is, it's a market and it's a supply and demand, you know? If they demand it, they'll bring on more flights. But a lot of folks do utilize Sun Country, we call them junkets, okay, to Nevada. It's a great deal for the, for the local folks, because the majority of, the majority of the cost of the flight is covered actually by the casinos. So a lot of, a lot of folks do the, do the junket flights and do the flights to Nevada, and they don't even gamble. They just use the, the opportunity to take the aircraft, to get to Nevada, to not even gamble, get a, get a great deal on the, on the trip, on the cost of the aircraft, the cost of the motel, and rent a car and go do the tourist thing, so, yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, it's, it's great.
Are there any other opportunities for things like that? Or how does, did we, did the airport contact them? Did they contact the airport? I mean, how does that work?
It's a combination of both. Initially, initially, Sun Country actually contacted us and said, hey, can you know, can we do this? We said, great. We're fortunate that our airport is large enough, meets the category of the fire, of the fire needs, what have you, fire, fire truck support, the proper jet bridge, when it's working, Sean, I think. But yeah, so yeah, we're fortunate that we have a large airport to do it, because the 737 balanced field length is something at a level of 5,500 feet, and we're at 7,400 feet, so that's helpful, yeah.
And I know the Council is pretty updated on it, and there's been some issues with the building. Could you just touch on those a little bit?
Yes. A little brief history on the, on the new terminal building. From day one, unfortunately, it is the way it is. The roof was, was designed subpar, a combination of the design, a combination of the actual ownership, et cetera. Through a series of events and a series of promises that were not kept, the commission made the proper, made the proper decision to bring a suit against the architect, the engineering firm, et cetera, and a lot of the sub, a lot of the subcontractors. We're in the middle of that litigation as we speak, and so, in fact, just recently, the rainy vent 2,700 last week, you know, three weeks ago, a month, we had some issues with some lighting in the terminal building, and we, upon the cause was that enough water's come through, that some of the electrical work, some of the quote-unquote "support cans" in the roof are filling full of water. So that's been added, that's been added to the suit, and so it's all mixed into the blend, but it's been, 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 been quite, quite, quite a, quite a event.
Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Wegner has a question. He asked if the FAA asked about the EMS station?
I can handle that one. Please. So Counselor Wegner is referring to like a joint-use facility on the airport property to manage emergency crises both at the airport and then use it as a community function to help both the county and the city manage any sort of emergencies. I did ask FAA this question, and unfortunately, they view it as a non-aeronautical use, so that is a use, whether it's a business or a facility, that doesn't have to be at the airport. So it could be next door, it could be downtown, that function can be served regardless if it's on the airport or not. The FAA is very particular about how they use their land that they've provided funding to, so it's federally obligated land, that's the term that they use. So if you wanted to do something like that, you would have to convince the FAA that there is a non-aeronautical use in the form of a land release. You release the land from federal obligations, the FAA would have to buy into that idea, then they would formally release those obligations and allow the city and the county and the Airport Commission to afford that facility. So it is possible, however, the FAA doesn't give up their land easily and without strong proof that it can't go elsewhere, or there isn't a place that would make more sense to give up those FAA aeronautical rights. So certainly a possibility, but it would have to be shown on an airport layout plan, and then the FAA would have to go along with that decision to process it.
Excellent. All right, any other questions that they have, that anyone has for those? All right? Oh, please.
I'd just like for Kyra to give us a, explain this one to them.
Employments?
Like everyone asks, which with that one? Yeah. So I provided a copy of our updated employment. So this is just for SkyWest employments. This does not include any other airlines that come through Sun Country or privates or anything like that. As of June, we are at 6,335 total employments, and so we look at the outgoing employments, and that is what goes towards our 10,000. For the year, so far this year, we are up again, almost 900 employments over last year. And then last year, we were up significantly, up 48 percent over 22. So our employments continue to track a significant increase.
One of the, the questions that always comes up when, when we talk airport from folks is scheduling, and I know that you have given a great answer to me that I understand. Can you talk about the scheduling and how that happens, and why we have the scheduling we have, and if there's any possibility to make it a little bit easier on local folks?
Sure. SkyWest Airlines is subsidiary of Delta, that's our, obviously our carrier here, and what happens is, is that when we're on the end of the food chain, literally on the end of the food chain, they're battling for slots, quote-unquote, arrival and departure slots in Minneapolis, and, and they want maximum yield for those areas. So each, each slot, each arrival point, each gate is very, very expensive, and Big Delta says, hey, we're, you know, we're carrying some of the value, we're carrying a lot of the monies to rent those, to rent those spaces for those flights every day, and we want to put larger aircraft in those and utilize those in the mornings and the evenings for the pushes. And that's what happens with the smaller carriers such as our, the SkyWest, that, and it's, it's a money game to them, and it's also Big Brother Delta is, is quote-unquote driving the bus, in a sense, to a degree, to set those schedules. And I appreciate that hardly, but we've really tried, you know, we've tried hard to say, you know, and it isn't that we can't run it back up the flagpole again and say, you know, let's see, let's see if we can improve it, but I appreciate that, I do.
I do have another question from Mr. Wegner. What revenue does the airport receive from the deplanements?
So airport funding, you know, comes in a couple different categories for a commercial service airport like International Falls. The federally AIP program that funds capital projects. Another source of funding is the PFC program, it's called the Passenger Facility Charge. Each airline ticket has a $4.50 charge per leg of your flight, and that is to help local airports with different kind of maintenance and infrastructure upgrades that specifically support the airline operation operating at the airport. So $4.50 is primarily the revenue that is generated from passenger activity at airports. There are other types of activity, fuel sales, so, I mean, SkyWest, every time they come, they're buying gas from the airport. The Airport Commission has a fuel mileage charge, so they're receiving money in that regard, too. So, but those are the two main ones that you can see from, from that activity.
If I may.
Please.
One of the, one of the important funding, funding things that's really interesting is the EAS funding. So without essential air service, the air, we don't have airline. Again, on the end of the food chain, our numbers are small, so thankfully we have EAS, essential air service. But what's interesting about essential air service dollars is it's fully generated by the end user. The majority of those monies, it's pretty cool, the majority of those monies are paid for by foreign carriers that are using our airspace. So as an example, Listanzia comes from, let's just say, on arbitrary discussion, they come from London, and they're going to LAX. The timeframe that our controllers, United States, control that aircraft all over the East Coast, till the time it arrives, LAX on the West Coast, they are charged significantly they are charged significantly for that use. And so, big pot, a big part of that funding pot for EAS comes from foreign carriers. So, it's, it's a very creative, uh, it's a, it's a very creative and very effective way to, to fund EAS.
So, so that EIS fund, uh, that?
Essential airstrip, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, please.
Does that, uh, that just go right into the, the airport, um, commission fund? Or how does?
No, it does not. It comes out of department, it comes out of the Department of Transportation, and those checks are written, double quotation marks, directly to the airline. We do not facilitate those monies.
So, do we receive any of those funds for, like, the passenger fees or anything like that? No, it just keeps us up and running?
Go ahead with how it works.
We receive the PFC funds.
Okay.
So, we get a check each month from Delta, Sky West.
Okay.
Other airlines are, are normal that we receive, and then those funds go to specific projects. So, currently, the majority of our PFCs are going to the terminal project.
Okay. It sounds like airport funding's really easy and simplistic.
Yes, true.
Any other questions for, for these folks?
If I may.
Please.
Interesting story to share and, and to, uh, and to, to give some positive input to our, your esteemed, literally, Fire Chief Adam Manasa was involved in something that was very helpful. On July sixth, uh, I was actually driving, I was north of St. Cloud about twenty miles, and at seven-thirty in the evening, I got a call from Minneapolis Center. And it was an emergency call. And the protocol is as follows, that if a scheduled carrier airport, a smaller airport such as ours, where we have a lack or not a lack, but a small amount of staff, protocol is that Minneapolis Center has an aircraft that has a in-flight problem, and they're declaring an emergency, and they're concerned about a fire, of course, they pick out one of the airports that has crash fire rescue ARF, which is us. And, uh, so I answered the phone, obviously, and they goes, hey, Thor, and what's going, what's going? Yeah, uh, we have an aircraft, it was actually a sworn engine Merlin III, uh, twin-engine turbine airplane, high-performance aircraft, and he has a major, uh, issue with one of his engines. He would like to make an emergency landing at Hiving, but it being the July fourth weekend, could not contact anywhere, anywhere there. So, made the call to us. They said, we're already on the way to International Falls, can you help us? Said, absolutely, we can help you. Um, I called back to my staff, I had one staff member on at that time, and I was just, uh, picking up my phone to actually contact Fire Chief Manasa to see if I could get some help. And he was already calling me, because through the, when Minneapolis Center pushes the big red button, a lot of things happen. People get called, fire support gets called, ambulances get called, law enforcement gets called, et cetera. So, it was a very, uh, it made me feel, feel good. It comforted me that I was driving along, and all of a sudden there's my phone lighting up with Fire Chief Manasa saying, hey, can I help you? That's exactly what he said to me. I said, absolutely. So, uh, Fire Chief Manasa, uh, took his time on a Saturday night, came to the airport, supported my guy, uh, law enforcement, I believe Adam, maybe the county in that particular event?
I think, uh, we could definitely.
Uh, and, uh, my nephew Drake Deal was also involved, and my quasi-nephew, Keon Gonzalez, uh, who, who is my quote-unquote quasi-nephew, so make a long story short as possible. Um, gentleman landed, uh, with one agency cured, not running, uh, dangerous situation, used up the whole runway, et cetera. Thankfully, no fire, no death, no injury, no harm. But I just say from a point of pride, uh, thanks to Fire Chief Manasa for his help. It was very helpful.
So, what happened with the plane after it was all said and done?
Yeah, great question. Uh, taxied in, uh, got them parts of the box, and, uh, and did a, did a maintenance, uh, work on it. They contacted some folks, uh, and sent a maintenance team and, and, and fixed it, and to a point that they could bring it to a maintenance center. And I believe they actually flew, of all places, to Winnipeg to, to work on it, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is all we need. Thank you, guys. And I, I would really appreciate if we do this again next year. I think this is fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. It was very educational.
Thank you.
All right. I think we're going to the second page. We are. All right. Uh, next we have adopt a resolution, uh, to approve the Public Employees Retirement Association Spare Firefighter Engineer Declaration for Michael Fisher's membership into the Public Employees Police and Fire Plan. Chair would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
We got a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Hearing none. Call the question.
Aye.
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 All vote yes, motion carries. Next, we have a, a removal or repair order, uh, for the hazardous building located at twenty-two-ten Third Avenue, Third Avenue West, I'm sorry. City Attorney. Chelsea, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, sorry. It took me a minute to unmute. Um, so twenty-two-ten Third Avenue is, um, a, excuse me, this is a trailer park. Um, it's actually just a trailer that's being removed, the building. Um, broken windows, broken doors, uh, holes in the floors, that sort of thing. Um, just needs to come down. And then the next item is Real Dreams Property LLC, another building that probably needs to come down. Um, last I spoke with Jared, and I drove by it. I didn't go in it or anything like that. Most of it, you can see from the outside, the foundation is buckling. Um, he estimates that it's probably been pushed in about four feet. Um, the, the structure walls there, so just two properties that are in bad shape.
Okay. Uh, Chair would entertain a motion to approve that order.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Is this for both of them now?
No, just the first one.
Just the first one, okay. I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Discussion. Hearing none. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, four-zero. And then the second one would be, uh, to approve the removal or repair of the matter of ten-twenty-ninth Street. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Chelsea, any, any additional information on this one?
This is the second one. I was talking about where the foundation's buckling.
Okay. All right. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, call the question.
Aye.
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 And all vote yes, motion carries, four-zero. Thank you. Uh, we'll go to Public Works' recommendations. Consider the donation from the Rainier Rec Club for scoreboards at Holler Field. Tim Ringhopper. I thought maybe you were just here for the rousing conversation about the airport.
I've lived here thirty years, and my first meeting ever. Uh, I was approached a couple of weeks ago by Berta Hagan, uh, from the Rainier Rec Club. She was watching, uh, Little League games, summer ballgames, and she said, geez, what are we gonna do about getting scoreboards at, uh, Holler Field, just like we have over at Rizzo? And, uh, she said that Rainier Rec Club would be very interested in donating those. So, uh, it just so happened, I saw Ted that same evening, and I talked to Ted about, uh, is there a way that the city could help us out by installing those scoreboards, getting the, uh, electricity to those places, getting the, uh, standards in, the poles in to hang the scoreboards on. Uh, and of course, we, I came to the Public Works' meeting last Monday, and we discussed that, uh, we should come before the council and make sure that that was something that we could get done hopefully this summer, uh, so that when next season starts, obviously, with spring, we'd be very difficult to get out there and get those in before the season started. So, was hoping that we could get those installed this fall.
All right. Was there any concerns that came out of Public Works on it at all?
Oh, there was a concern about the maintenance of it afterwards, but I see in the letter that they said that they would not want to be responsible for any maintenance out prior or after the scoreboards are put in, that they basically give them to the city, the city's responsible for maintenance and everything after that.
And I think we're finding another concern. What was, though, when, when they need to replace, won't be for a long time. That, that isn't go, hopefully, um, the city will not be liable to replace them. It won't be.
All right. Um, I'm so scared that I even want to say this. Mike, do you have any thoughts on this? It's baseball.
I think it's excellent. I am all for it.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, likewise, we all are.
I'll make a motion, all of that.
All right, we have a motion from, uh, Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion?
Have they ordered? They haven't ordered them yet.
We have not ordered them yet, no. We were waiting to make sure everything got approval and, uh...
Do you have a tentative delivery date on it, so that we know?
We, I haven't, I was told that once we ordered them, it would take two weeks for them to be delivered, so.
If we get them in this year, then that'd be great, yeah.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Wait, it's gone. We're gonna need at least two weeks for it to be dry enough for Rusty to be back there putting them in. Thanks, Tim.
Uh, next we have a request from International Falls Rotary Club to use a silver scissor lift for the local artist Bruce Trask to freshen up the downtown murals. Bob?
Thank you. Uh, Bob DeGrosse, representing the Rotary Club of International Falls and a local resident of International Falls as well. And the club has been working to raise funds to restore the five murals that are in town, I mean, five different buildings. And, uh, we're just seeking the assistance of the city of International Falls by the use of that scissor lift as an in-kind type of donation towards this project and everything, so.
I can't imagine there was a problem with that at Public Works.
The only problem was, we was, we were questioning insurance-wise, whose insurance is gonna cover that during that time period? Did you come up with something, Betty?
I didn't. I know you had mentioned, uh, in your context that you were going to talk with the Rotary, whether or not that would be covered?
Yeah, we do have, uh, insurance carrier for the Rotary Club in the United States, um, and for our district Rotary Club, which covers the local club as well, as it does when we do like the Beer Garden and things like that.
Okay.
So, I'm just working with them to assure that the, uh, current liability type of coverage that we have is gonna be okay for this type of work. And, um, hopefully, we'll hear from them within the next week or so as to whether or not we need additional. But once we get an approval, whether or not this current liability or if it needs to be modified, we'll make sure that you get a, a copy of it and everything, so.
Perfect.
And also to ensure all the safety precautions I use, like harnesses and...
Yeah, I believe Ted...
That type of stuff, and some training if they haven't had it.
Yeah, exactly. Right. Ted had said that he would, or one of his crew would work with, uh, Bruce to do the training.
All right.
Perfect. All right, so Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler, second by Councilor Buller. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four-zero.
Thanks for your support.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a couple of, uh, recommendations that came out of committee of the whole. Uh, approve the revised earned sick and safe time policy with revisions that align with the amendments signed into legislation on May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion. Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four-zero. Next, approve paying out the accrued ESST for employees that are now exempt from accruing ESST, uh, which are volunteer ambulance attendants, EMTs, and casual paramedics, volunteer firefighters, and spare firefighter engineers. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kayler. Discussion. Just, uh, wanna make clear on what this is. Last year, when, uh, when the state had instituted ESST, um, they had said anybody who is paid by an organization needs to have their employees accrue sick time. Um, and there was not any exemptions. Um, now they have approved exemptions for people that volunteer their, their schedule. So, uh, fight, volunteer firefighters, EMTs, people that are not, um, a nine-to-five or a scheduled employee over the course of the last year have earned sick and safe time. Um, the city is not required to, uh, pay that out. Um, however, we have chose to pay that out because it was something that was, um, regulated by the state. We had to put it in, and these people did earn that time over the course of the last year that they did work when they were called out for EMT service or to a fire. So, um, just trying to clear our books and make sure that, uh, we are handling it, um, and being, being fair to the employees that, uh, were underneath that regulation. So, we have a motion and a second. We'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And all vote yes, motion carries, four-zero. Next, uh, we have a resolution approving one and a half times the regular hourly pay rate for emergency medical technicians, EMTs, and casual paramedics on some holidays. The holidays are inside your packet. Um, so the Chair would entertain a motion to approve those particular holidays.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries, four-zero. Next, we have, uh, approval of submitting an offer to purchase property at twenty-two-thirty-two Second Avenue East. Um, this is for the, uh, the Kutaska Building. Um, we are submitting an offer for, to purchase the building for one dollar. Um, after taxes, it would be one sixty-five. I think that's pretty excessive. Um, but the Chair would entertain a motion to approve submitting that offer for purchase of property.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion.
Uh, I'll be abstaining because I'm on the board of Kutaska.
Okay. Um, any other thoughts? Betty, did you have anything to add on this?
I have nothing additional, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so I'll call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm just...
Abstaining.
Okay. And I, I will vote yes, motion carries three for the motion and one abstention. Um, any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of the Administrator, Attorney, and the Department Head, City Administrator.
Uh, Mayor and Council, nothing additional at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any questions for the City Administrator? I, I just have one question, only because we're getting closer and closer, and, uh, um, I see there are some folks that are interested online. When is the filing period for, uh, City Council and Mayor? It's in, it's in August, I believe, but when, when do we have that?
July, it opens July thirty-first, runs...
Thirty.
Thirtieth. Thirtieth. And runs through August thirteenth.
Okay, so it's a two-week window.
It is a two-week window, and for the City of International Falls, it's the Counselor-at-Large position and the Mayor position that is open currently for this next, um, election.
And, uh, it, it, it came to my attention that somebody, uh, who was looking at running for Mayor thought that I still had the option of running for Mayor as well, and I'm not. I have no interest in running for Mayor. I love the position. I love what, uh, we've been able to do here as a community. Um, so in the event that, uh, I do not get elected to the State House, um, I'm gonna have a little bit of spare time here in our community, and I think I'm gonna enjoy that just as much as I do this job. So, um, we do have the two open positions. My name will not be on it. Um, so I just want to make sure that that's very, very clear. This isn't, uh, midterm election for me or anything like that. So, um, we'll go to the City Attorney. Do you have anything to add this evening?
I have nothing additional this evening.
Okay. Uh, Department Heads? All right, we'll go down to, uh, in your packets, you have the Police Monthly Report for June. We also have the Fire EMS, uh, report for June. Um, Reports of the Mayor, Council Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Anybody have anything to bring forward? Okay. Uh, well, our Councilor Buller wanted to talk about the, uh, the July thirtieth, um, Port of Entry Modernization Project. There's an open house that's gonna be on July thirtieth at, uh, nine AM at the Coffee Landing, and they'll have the same, uh, relatively the same program, if you missed that timeframe, at six o'clock at the Bacchus Community Center. This is for the Port of Entry, um, how the federal government is looking at changing the entrance, uh, to get into, uh, Fort Francis and coming back from Fort Francis. So, um, there are some businesses that are concerned. I think there's some, uh, residents that are concerned. So there are some businesses that are concerned, I think there's some residents that are concerned, and this will be a great opportunity for us to talk to the, the folks at the GSA about the project. Anything else?
I'm just, I was appointed to the Rainy River Basin One Watershed Plan, and we are inching ourselves closer to getting a plan, a document up. We're going, we reviewed the first part of it, the Policy Committee, that other committees have been working on, and they're going to go back and review it again, and then there'll be some more internal stuff, but hopefully by next spring, we will have that document. And I would urge anybody that when they see notices to attend a meeting about it and what it's going to be about, to attend, so you know what's going on. And we got what, what we're going to try and concentrate on in the next 10 years with the dollars. A big part of it's going to be hopefully some of the erosion, but, and everything else in between and there. So when there's an opportunity to look at it, or there's meetings, when those will be, maybe, probably won't be towards more winter, has winter, but just, if you're interested, you should come and attend, so you know what's going on. When I have more of a document, I'll share a little more here at it. And I'd just like to also say, if you got some spare time this week, give blood Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday at the Covenant Church, they have openings. Irene Anderson from the VFW is in charge, takes a little bit, doesn't take very long, I do it every time, and like I say, there's snacks at the end. It's all they own. And it's really a good thing to do.
Yeah.
If you're able.
Anything else? I, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, volunteers, city staff, police, fire, ambulance, everybody for the Fourth of July. This year was a week-long event. I'm, I'm assuming that's not going to be the case next year, just with the way that the, the holiday falls next year. But we started the first with, with a concert from Chris Cluey that was put on by Bacchus Community Center. Weather ended up making it a little bit rough, so they ended up moving it from the amphitheater, which is a fantastic venue for outdoor music, to Bacchus Community Center. On the second, we did kids karaoke, which Kyra Hasbargen's son stole the show with his country rendition of Everything. Fantastic, the kids karaoke was a wonderful evening. The Mother Pluckers played on the 3rd of July, they did fantastic, people milled around and the, the food vendors were, were great. The Dirty Dozen came out and played on the Fourth of July, the parade went off without a hitch, the fireworks were fantastic. The events in the park from the VFW doing the, the wood chip pile, the Elks doing the, the watermelon, everything went off fantastically on the Fourth. And the 5th of July, doing it just a little bit different this year, the, the two bands, having Bill Picarski, Bill Picarski come out and play, always has a, a great group of people. And Gen X Jukebox, which had a tie to International Falls, they, they absolutely rocked it. I, I think it was a fantastic one-week event, there were so many people in town for class reunions and just, just people in the community. And I, I just want to say thank you. And if I, I did miss anybody, it's not on purpose. It was just a great showing from everybody, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the people that put that together. There's going to be a wrap-up meeting later this week on the Fourth of July. We'll kind of wrap it up and see, see what we can do next year and how we move forward for next year's event. As weird as it is, the Fourth of July is in the charter as an official city function. So we, we, this is the one that we, we throw it all out on. The Bass Tournament and all the other events that we have in our community are fantastic, but this is the one that is commissioned by the City of International Falls. So it was fantastic. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. We'll go to audience, anybody in the audience to bring anything forward? All right. Correspondence, in your packets, you have the Coochin County Board of Commissioners minutes from June 25th, International Falls Public Library meeting information, July 10th, and International Falls Port of Entry Project, I, I touched on that. Our next meeting is going to be on August 5th at 5:30, so by that point, you could have already signed up to be Counselor-at-Large or Mayor. So with that being said, this meeting is adjourned. We do have an EDA meeting directly following it.